All right, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we will call the meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bonk Crooks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kebawattan.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Prushee.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Quorum present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have here is the minute approval for the August seventh, 2024 meeting, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered. All right, first, we've got a couple presentations and proclamations today. The first one we have here, I'll bring down Chief Anderson. We've got our badge ceremony for one of our new firefighters, Nathan Brogan here.
Shouldn't have that memorized by now?
I'm not as good as the clerk. I don't have these memorized. Can I have Nate Brogan and his dad, Chief David Brogan, to come forward, please? So, tonight, we're here to celebrate firefighter Brogan receiving his badge. He has served one year of probation. That is a trial phase to becoming a Trenton firefighter. We put him through a lot of different tasks and tests, and he's done well. So, with that, we're going to go ahead and do our little swearing-in ceremony, sir. Says firefighters are civil servants as sworn officers following standard policies and procedures of the fire service and standing, standard operating procedures of their departments. They are there to prevent human suffering and death, to stabilize the incident, and prevent damages and loss of property. It is a great honor to have this opportunity to swear in this candidate of the Trenton Fire Department, Nate Brogan. So, I'm gonna have you go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support and defend the Constitution
that I will support and defend the Constitution
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and the state of Michigan
and the state of Michigan
against all enemies
against all enemies
both foreign and domestic
both foreign and domestic
and I will faithfully and impartially
and I will faithfully and impartially
discharge my duties as firefighter
discharge my duties as firefighter
of the Trenton Fire Department
of the Trenton Fire Department
under the appointment of the department
under the appointment of the apartment
according to the laws of the city of Trenton
according to the laws of the city of Trenton
to the best of my abilities
to the best of my abilities
so help me God
so help me God.
It's great.
Introduce your, your family that's here besides your dad, and then I'm sure the council would like to shake your hand as well.
Well, I'd like to introduce my mother, my girlfriend, and my grandparents.
Oh, great.
I'd like to thank them. Thank them very much for coming out to support me.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
You're welcome, Nate. Thanks for putting in time.
Well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Chief, where are you going?
Congratulations and welcome.
Congrats, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
And don't worry, we won't make you stay if you want to leave, so that's alright. All right, so the next, there we go. Good time, and give everyone a second here. I think we, I forgot to take a motion to make that a part of the regular meetings. Moved and supported, is unanimously so ordered. All right, so next up here, I'd like to bring down Mr. Gage Pittman and anyone along with him too, for his Eagle Scout Award Ceremony here. So, before we get started here too, well, first off, nice to actually meet you, Gage. How are you? So, for those that don't know, and I know Councilman Benedetti does, and we had some other folks that have been plugged in from the city wise, but Gabe Pittman was going through his Eagle Scout project, and he decided he wanted to do something that gave back to the city of Trenton. So, while working with Tim Beaker in our rec department, Gage decided to put together picnic tables that are now gonna be at our cultural center and other places across the city, and was able to contribute those to us too. So, on behalf of the entire council, we really want to thank you, Gabe, with this, this plaque here presented to Gage Pittman for exemplary community service and dedication in completing the Eagle Scout Service Project for ADA-accessible picnic tables across Trenton. So, thank you very much, Gage. We appreciate it. And if you want to say a few words or anything like that, or introduce your family and friends here too, and I know council's gonna want to shake your hand too. So, thank you for being such a great, a great part of Trenton.
I'd like to introduce my aunt, who is technically not, but more like a family friend, but not really. I knew, I knew her for too long. My grandfather here, he helped me with the project. And, well, me. Oh, Mr. Peterson is here too. I almost forgot about him. Oops.
Well, we really appreciate it very much, Gage, and thank you again for being, doing such an awesome thing for people in Trenton here, so. Give you this here, and I know all the council will want to shake your hand and say thanks too, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Gage. Keep it up. That's great. Thank you.
Good job. Nice seeing you, buddy. Good job.
Thank you.
And we'll give you the same roll. You don't have to worry about stands. Good. Thank you again very much, Gage. We really appreciate it. And I think also I need a motion to make that part of the regular minutes too. Moved and supported. All right, any further discussion? Unanimously so ordered. So, this one I would go in order for. Next up, we have a presentation from Michelle Tangue with the Trenton Art Festival. If we can motion to make this a part of the regular meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? We'll let you take it away, Michelle. So, whenever you're ready.
Hello. I am the creative director for the Trenton Art Festival. From September seventh until the fourteenth, we will be transforming the downtown area into an art destination so that you guys can enjoy it for the next decade. We have nine murals going up, two sculptures, art shows in almost twenty locations, and we're really excited about this. You can visit trentonartfestival.com for more information. Every participating store in downtown Trenton has pamphlets that you guys can grab, everybody can enjoy. We have a lot of exciting activities all week long for everybody to participate in. Children's activities on the thirteenth and fourteenth at participating locations. But yeah, that's basically it. Does anybody have any questions for me from the council?
Councilman Prushee?
Very well done. Thank you. And also, any plans for, if there's inclement weather, what's the plan?
Well, I've done a lot of mural festivals. We usually will postpone a few days. It usually doesn't rain all week long, so fingers crossed that doesn't happen. If it rains on our two big days, the thirteenth and fourteenth, we do not have plans to, you know, do any of those events for the, the next week. But a lot of the events are actually indoors at the participating venues. Like, we have an art show at Elliot's Bakery, we have art show at the Promenade. So, a lot of them are indoors, so even if it does rain, people can still participate in the events.
And then when will the murals all be done?
The murals will be done by the fourteenth. I give artists, sometimes they're, they work a little slow, so I give them until the fifteenth, but hopefully they'll be done by the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Michelle. We appreciate it. We're really looking forward to it. Alrighty, and yes, you guys are cool to leave too. All right, next up, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. We've got this portion of public comment exclusively for items on today's agenda. Would ask that, we'll have another opportunity for all other public comment towards the close of the meeting. As to anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit your comment to five minutes. Not seeing anyone for this phase. We'll go right on along here. Next up, we have here under authorities, commissions, and board, boards and committees, we have resignation letter from Rena Bellinger with the Downtown Development Authority. If we could get a motion to receive and place this on file and request that we send a letter thanking her for her services. So, moved and supported. Councilwoman Bonk Crooks?
Yes, I'm, was sad to see this resignation come in. The vintage mercantile, you know, store that they owned is, you know, has now left, but I just want to thank Rena and Angie personally for adding a big, you know, spark to our downtown, and they're the ones who have initiated a lot of the events that we have down there, and have spearheaded those, and I hope they'll still continue to work, you know, with Trenton and the council and stuff. But thank you to them, because they've done a great job for the city.
Yep, absolutely. We're, I know that they're excited about the new tenant that they'll have in there, and they still want to work with, on some of the festivals and event-related things too, but yeah, we're excited for that, so. Any further, and I guess for that matter too, I'll put a plug in for any folks watching or listening. We have vacancies on not just our DDA board, but many others as well, so want to encourage anyone interested to check out our city website and put an application in. Even folks that might not necessarily get picked on the first round, we keep them on file and do try and get those turned around, so we're always happy to have more people interested in getting involved. So, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, we'll go now to groups and organizations. Madam Clerk, first we have here is the American Legion Post 426 Annual Car and Bike Show.
Great, thank you. The American Legion is asking for permission to hold their car and bike show on Saturday, September twenty-first. They would like to close West Jefferson between Atwood and Elm Street, and this would be between the hours of twelve PM to five PM under, under the direction of the police department and the DPW.
So moved. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. All right, first up, under department heads and officials, we have our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, a request to purchase a used forklift for the DPW garage.
Thank you, Mayor. The DPW repair gra, the DPW's repair garage forklift is a nineteen seventy-four Yale. The transmission is failing and parts are no longer available. This forklift is used by our mechanics to unload freight from delivery trucks and to maneuver large parts when making repairs on our trucks. It is in the opinion of our motor vehicle pool supervisor that a used forklift is more than adequate for our needs. He obtained quotes from two different used forklift dealers and chose the two thousand sixteen model Nissan from Quantum Lift. This forklift has all the modern-day safety features that our current one lacks. This forklift comes with a ninety-day warranty and has been inspected by our senior mechanic. Therefore, I am requesting to purchase this two thousand sixteen Nissan forklift from Quantum Lift in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. The funds for this purchase were budgeted in the motor vehicle pool machinery and equipment account.
So moved. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Prushee, then Councilman Kebawattan.
Yes, what would a new one cost?
Just north of thirty thousand.
All right, thank you. Nice work.
Councilman Kebawattan.
What's the fuel type on that, Kevin?
Propane.
Propane, okay.
All right, seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks. All right, next up, our fire chief, Chief Anderson, electric PPV fan purchase.
Good evening. Currently, we operate two battery-operated positive-pressure ventilation fans, PPV. These fans are used as, in an important role in creating ventilation patterns in a structured fire to improve safety for firefighters through visibility as well as assisting in clearing smoke and odors from residents' homes after small contained fires. The two existing battery-operated PPV fans have served us well, and we are in the process of some replacement of parts on them because they are five years old. With the overall success of the battery-operated fans, we are moving forward with replacing the approximately twenty-year-old gas-powered fan that has become unreliable to start and continue to run over time. This is, so this proposed purchase of a new battery-operated PPV fan by Supervac not only provides a higher reliability for our operations, but operates on a battery platform. Many of our other handheld battery tools use, made by Milwaukee, and will make for easy battery swaps in the field. Monies are available in the firefighting supplies budget for this item, and our, and our truck repair has supplied the cheapest quote at four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
So moved. Support. Moved and supported. Any other discussions? Unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Chief. All right, next up, we have our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Ms. Wilson, here for the Rockwell Automation Service Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm asking for council's approval to the renewal of our yearly Rockwell Automation Service Agreement. This agreement provides us with twenty-four-hour support, updates, and security for our SCADA system. We have numerous Allen Bradley PLCs throughout the plant and lift stations which we require support for. This one-year renewal is a budgeted item this year, and we received this service agreement through McNott McKay, which our local Rockwell representative. I'm asking your approval for this renewal of the one-year service agreement in the cost of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Prushee?
Yes, what was the agreement last year?
Twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Went up roughly two thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Julie. Next up, looks like we have one lead item from Chief Anderson here, the purchase of a fire hose with AFG grant support.
Good evening again. In, last year, we received AFG grant from the federal government for their part to be twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents with a match from Trenton of thirteen hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents for purchasing new fire hose. At the time that the application was submitted, to the time that the grant was awarded, the prices of hose have dramatically increased due to inflationary costs, and we've struggled to find any quotes that would make us stay within the, the project's award amount. Recently, I just received a quote that I'm bringing before you currently, that gets us close, from West Shore Fire that will total the project at thirty-five thousand, five hundred and six dollars. An amendment has been filed with AFG to try and get an increase to the award amount, which would increase their funding about six thousand dollars, and it would increase Trenton's matching funds from thirteen hundred and change to seventeen hundred, seventy-five dollars and thirty cents. If they are denied, or we are denied for the amendment however, Trenton's matching funds would increase to eighty, eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, which I still have available in the firefighting supplies account to meet this demand. This quote is provided on a short term based on there's multi-departments make, purchasing, acquiring this stuff on a multi-department bid, so it's giving us a little more buying power. I attached three different quotes for you to see the difference, and I'm requesting that we go ahead with acceptance of this quote with our portion not to exceed eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents from the firefighting supplies account.
That's a move.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion here? Councilman Prushee?
Chief, if we get the hose, what are you doing with the old hose?
Well, it's a twelve-to-fourteen-week lead time on the new hose to start with. At that point, some of it will, will still be operational. We'll, we'll have gone through our annual hose testing, so it will be a wait and see how much of it is still serviceable and in service, and after that, it'll be either dispensed of through donations or scrapped, depending on what's, what's the need.
The reason I bring that up, unfortunately I have to bring this type of conversation up, but they, they have in the past cut those hoses up and use them for active shooters on hinged doors. So, I was just hoping that we would not miss an opportunity to either donate it to businesses, schools, wherever
Correct.
and just, not just totally discarding it. So, that's why I brought that up.
Yep, and then, and, and you brought that up, even during conversations with vendors, I've talked with them about some of their own tests that they run, and they start scrapping hose that doesn't meet their test standards that if it's still usable, to consider reaching out to school systems to do that as well, so we can definitely support and make that happen.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Kebawattan.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to kind of, you touched on a little bit, but I want the residents to know, there's, you know, there's an expiration on this hose, right? It only lasts so long, and you pressure test it, and once it doesn't pass tests, then
Yeah, there's some
it's really not usable, right?
Uh, you're, you're correct. There, there is some, I don't know that there's a, an absolute expiration, but we test them annually, and then through wear and tear, stuff like that, they do expire, but there's recommendations onto when to expire them. Many of the hoses that we're currently using, you know, former Lieutenant Benedetti used to operate with, so
It's been six years, buddy.
It's, it's been a while.
Some were older than me when I got there. What's the average life, life of the hose that you guys use?
Right now, our average is pretty close to seventeen to twenty years.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Chief. All right, we'll go on to our dispersments and statements, and then our reports. I will defer to our mayor pro tem, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve the authorized dispersment for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, an amount of two million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, twenty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Make a motion to please receive and place on file the financial summary dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, scheduled investments and cash on hand July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, City Beautiful Commission minutes, June fifth, twenty twenty-four, the Downtown Development Authority minutes, July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the Fire and Police Pension Board draft minute meetings, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, Fire Department monthly report, July twenty twenty-four, and Police Department monthly report, July twenty twenty-four.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman. All right, we'll go to other council business now, and I don't have anything for everyone tonight, so. We'll keep the train rolling here and get started with Councilwoman Bonk Crooks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I have nothing tonight either.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Benedetti.
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Hornbeck?
No, I just wanted to reiterate Michelle Tangue's plug for our art festival that's coming up. I've been working with her for the last year at least on it, and we have some amazing artists coming, not just to do the murals and the sculptures, but also into all the businesses, so. Everybody downtown is gonna be involved, and it's gonna be just a really fun time. There's a lot of kids' activities and some adult activities. I know there's a sip and stroll in that last Saturday, so it's gonna be a really great time. I hope everybody gets out and can check out the murals.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yep, it's gonna look great. Councilman Prushee?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a reminder, the kids are going back to school soon, and it's just kind of part of my gig that the red stop signs on buses aren't a suggestion here to stop, so the kids are gonna be crazy being back to school, so please watch out for them darting between cars and stuff like that. And also, everybody enjoy Labor Day, and that's it.
Coming up so soon. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kebawattan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Lost my place for a second. Caught back up in one fell swoop.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to remind residents, if you have Thank you, Mayor. Want to remind residents, if you haven't heard, that Wayne County's Department of Public Services will be hosting an update meeting here at City Hall on Thursday the 22nd at 6:00 PM. So, representatives from Wayne County will be here, as well, as well as their consultant, to provide some updates on the West Road Bridge. They, over the years, there have been questions. I know Councilwoman Von Crooks has had some questions in the past. So, we will have representatives here from Wayne County to kind of go over what the future plans are of that structure and answer some questions. So, other than that, Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you. And that's this Thursday at 6:00?
That is this Thursday, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM.
Oh, 6:00 PM, okay.
Yep, 6:00 PM, City Hall.
All righty, thank you. And Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say and wish Ms. Lenora Kirsten a happy 100th birthday. August 3rd, I presented her her proclamation from the city last week, and her and our family extend their thanks and their wishes. That's all I have for you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. We'll go to our other elected officials now here. Madam Clerk, do you have anything tonight?
I'll just mention that City Hall will be closed on Monday, September 2nd, for Labor Day, and our next meeting will be on Tuesday, September 3rd, at 7:00 PM.
Good, thank you. Madam Assessor, do you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Mr. Treasurer, it looks like you have something for us.
Yeah, I do.
Good, good.
Thanks for recognizing me, and good to be with you. A couple things. First of all, I just want to thank those folks that have paid their taxes. We really appreciate it to get them in a timely way. And then, a friendly reminder for those that haven't paid their taxes, that you can pay those, your tax bill before, by September 3rd. It's a Tuesday, so it's a little bit extended without penalty, and so we encourage you to do that. One final thing is, just to remind you of an opportunity to recognize somebody worthy, we have the Trenton Public Schools and the TEF Wall of Fame applications that is a deadline due September 1st. And so, those applications can be filled out and, and submitted. All successful applicants will be, and there will be only up to three, will be recognized at the signature event November 15th. Hi there.
Through the mayor.
Well, I just want to remind you that it's your anniversary tonight, and you should be taking your lovely wife to dinner if she'll have you, so.
I gotta be, I gotta be honest with you. It really isn't our anniversary.
It isn't?
No. Somebody asked me the question, that was the quickest
That hers and not yours, or neither one?
Every, every day that passes married to this wonderful, patient woman is, is an anniversary for me.
She got that right.
You've been, anyways, thank you for your thought.
You're our blessed.
Timber really teed you up on that one.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Yeah, gotcha.
Hold on, hey, Mike. Hey, Mike. On, on your announcements, usually you wear green. Why are you void of wearing green this evening?
I have green on.
Can you show that to the camera, please?
Some things you just have to trust.
Yeah.
All right, any of our department heads have anything that they want to follow up with on that? All right. Seeing none, we'll go right into public comment here. Anyone wishing to speak, would ask that you begin with your name and address. Please direct all questions through me. Please limit your comments to five minutes. We'll go to anyone in person first, then those on Zoom. All right, not seeing any, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported for adjournment at 7:27 PM. See you all in about two weeks.